I call this canvas or notice of canvas city commission of Rio Grande City. It's a meeting, of course, to canvass the election and it's Tuesday, November the 10th, 2020 approximately 6:02 PM and it is a virtual meeting. And at this time we'll have the invocation by Commissioner-elect Escobedo and followed by the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Ramirez.
I will be doing a demonstration. In the name of the Father, the Son and the Holy Spirit, Amen. Señor, este día, Padre Santísimo, te damos gracias por todas las bendiciones. Te pedimos que seas tú el que estés en este lugar, Padre Santísimo, que estés en los hogares de cada uno de nosotros. Te pedimos que nos sigas dando sabiduría y entendimiento para hacerlo mejor para nuestra comunidad, Padre Santísimo. Te damos gracias por todas las bendiciones, Amén. In the name of the Father, the Son and the Holy Spirit, Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Honor, takes a pledge of allegiance to thee, Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioners. This time we'll have the roll call and finding of quorum by Ms. Garza.
Yes, Mayor Villarreal.
Here.
Mayor Protem Garza.
Here.
Commissioner Flores.
I'm here, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with my camera.
Commissioner Ramirez. And Commissioner Alberto Escobedo.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Next item is to convene as local canvassing authority, letter A, discussion and possible action to canvass the election returns and approve resolution number 2020-33, certifying the results of the November 10th, 2020, city of Rio Grande City general election. Ms. Garza?
Yes, sir. We're here canvassing the elections after the canvassing the returns of the said election. The provisions of the election code, the city commission certifies the following are true and correct results to wit. Total votes, the total votes cast during early voting were 3,190, that the total votes cast on election day were 541, that 16 provisional votes were qualified and counted by the early voting ballot board on November 6th for a grand total of 3,747 votes cast. For mayor, that Huel Villarreal received 1,938 early votes, 332 election day votes and 10 provisional votes for a total of 2,280 votes. Alvarado received 1,197 early votes, 203 election day votes and six provisional votes for a total of 1,406 votes. Commissioner two, he has received 1,947 early votes, 326 election day votes and 12 provisional votes for a total of 2,285 votes. That Alberto Iglesias received 1,186 early votes, 198 election day votes and four provisional votes for a total of 1,388 votes. Commissioner four, that Dave Chachi Jones received 1,357 early votes, 193 election day votes and seven provisional votes for a total of 1,557 votes. That Alberto Escobedo received 1,819 early votes, 341 election day votes and nine provisional votes for a total of 2,169 votes. Any questions?
There's some feedback with one of the speakers, I don't know which one. But just to add, Ms. Garza, just to reiterate the way you handled in the election. You and your staff did a tremendous job. I know that this was your first election, but nonetheless, you really pulled through and from what I saw was a phenomenal election. And kudos to you and to the department and to all the staff that you had that proceeded to formalize a process that was very well thought out. And again, cannot say enough to the staff that had a phenomenal turnout and also to the electorate. You know, we did have a record turnout of both the city and of course county as well as the national election and I believe for school as well. So congratulations to the electorate here in Rio Grande City. Oh, I think I lost it. Can you still hear me?
We can hear you, Mayor.
Okay, I think the cameras, I'm having issues with the camera, but as long as you can hear me. Just to reiterate that point to the electorate, it's phenomenal to see that our electorate here, the residents, the community that went out and exercised their right to vote, that let their voice be heard. And I mean, the results were exceptional, like I said. And I'm glad that we as a community proceeded to vote and let our voice be heard. And again, going back to what I said earlier, I mean, at this point, one of the fundamental aspects of a democracy is to have a peaceful transition of power. And at this point, that's what canvassing is for and of course, doing the oath, which we'll do in a minute. But one last, one last point about our electorate. If you look at the numbers, one, high number of turnout and then two, the fact that people were able to vote based on the issues that were related or relative to them. It wasn't just a straight party ticket and you saw it in the election results. There were some candidates, for example, Republican candidates that received higher votes. And then there were some Democrat, Democratic candidates that also received high votes as well. So that votes well for our community that they're able to, that we have a very smart electorate that's willing to look at the issues and not just vote on a one-party straight ticket. And can't be prouder to be reflecting that as an electorate here in our beautiful city and certainly our county. And with that, Commissioners, if you have anything else to add about the experience in this election, you're more than welcome to add at this point.
Oh, Mayor, the only thing I gotta say, to echo what you said, as far as, you know, congratulating the staff, Ms. Garza and her staff and all the people who worked the election, I think it was a very long election, three weeks. I think this is the first time we have done three weeks and it felt like an eternity. But you know, again, I guess thank all the residents for coming out to vote and exercising their right to vote. And again, we did have record numbers. I don't think we've ever had this many voters come out in the city election. But again, I thank you all for coming out to vote and again, congratulations to all the parties, all the candidates. And again, I thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Escobedo?
Most definitely. I think it's so important that we thank all the people that went out to vote, especially due to the fact of COVID-19. And then people still saw the importance of practicing their right of voting and we all, it was a peaceful election. Thanks be to God. And I think the most important thing is we're now we're ready to get to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Garza, Commissioner Flores, anything you would like to add?
Yes, Mayor, first of all, I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Garza on a fine job she did in running this election. I know that it was a very unique situation based on our COVID pandemic. You could tell that they did very well in trying to keep people apart and making sure the police officers outside that everybody was wearing a face mask. And I want to congratulate all the staff that participated in this election. They did an excellent job. At the same time, Mayor, I'd like to say that I'd like to thank Mr. Jones for his contribution to this city, for the services that he gave. But at the same time, I want to congratulate you and Mr. Ramirez and of course, congratulate Alberto Escobedo. Like you mentioned, Mayor, it was a record amount of votes that came in. It was not expected due to this COVID pandemic. But I wanna, I wanna thank the voters of this community that came out and they spoke. And they decided, just like you said, it was a mixed ticket in every race, from our local race all the way to our federal election. And I just wanna congratulate everybody again. Thank you.
Commissioner Flores?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to add a special thanks to Ms. Garza for running a very smooth election. Thank you to all the judges and the clerks and the poll watchers that were instrumental in making sure that this election ran smoothly. And also the voters, definitely that they all showed up to vote. I'm very glad that they came out and exercised their right to vote. I'd like to also congratulate you, Mayor, on your reelection and Commissioner Ramirez on your reelection. Mr. Escobedo, congratulations and welcome to the city commission. And I would like to extend a special thanks to Commissioner Dave Chachi Jones for his many years of service and his tremendous contributions that he did make to this city commission and to the city of Rio Grande City.
Thank you, Commissioner Flores. And with that, anything else? We'll go ahead and then entertain a motion at this time. Anyone else would like to say? Go ahead.
Let me go ahead and just say what I have to say at the end, which with this, the following statements are made pursuant to applicable provisions of the Texas election code. For that, one, for the mayor, Huel Villarreal has received a majority of the votes cast and is therefore declared to be the elected mayor and shall commence his term of office upon execution of the certification of election by the mayor of the city of Rio Grande City. Two, for Commissioner place two, that Ray Ramirez has received a majority of the votes cast and is therefore declared to be elected Commissioner place two and shall commence his term of office upon execution of the certification, certification of election by the mayor of the city of Rio Grande City. And for Commissioner place four, Alberto Escobedo has received a majority of votes cast and is therefore declared to be elected Commissioner place four and shall commence his term of office upon execution of the certification of election by the mayor of the city of Rio Grande City.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. With that, do we entertain a motion at this time for item 2A?
I said, oh, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez. Do I have a second? Do we have a second?
I said.
We have a second by Commissioner Flores. Any further discussion on this item? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, raise your left hand. Motion carries. Congratulations, Commissioner Ramirez. Congratulations, Commissioner Escobedo. And at this time, we'll go ahead and administer or administration of oath of office to newly elected officials, item 2B. And we'll go ahead and start with Commissioner Ramirez, followed by Commissioner Escobedo and then myself, so. And.
Let me call my family, hold on. Let me reposition the camera.
Take your time, sir. Reposition the camera.
Let me call my family into the room, hold on. Hey, ready?
Hello, Mr. Ramirez, hi.
Congratulations.
Eric, congratulations.
Commissioners, what is that?
Judge.
Ms. Garza, done? We start by raising your right hand. I state your name. I, Ray Ramirez. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. Faithfully. Faithfully. Execute. Execute. The duties of office of Commissioner. The duties of office of Commissioner. Place two. Place two. Of Brooklyn City. Of Brooklyn City. Star County. Star County, Texas. And will. And will. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. Preserve. Preserve. Protect. Protect. And defend. The Constitution. The Constitution. And laws. And laws. Of the United States. Of the United States. Of this state. Of this state. So help me God. So help me God. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, guys.
Commissioner Ramirez, you have the floor. You're welcome to say a few words or many, whatever you choose to.
I'd just like to take up the, thank Judge Valdez for coming over to actually mention the oath. And first and foremost, my family, especially my wife of 27 years, you know, all the support. She is the rock of this family and with that, you know, I'd like to, you know, give her a big thanks. Also to my family here, my children, Devon, Derek and Elena, and also to Aaron, who's in Austin at this time and will be here with us today. To the family and friends who came out to support us. I really truly appreciate all the support. I've been blessed to be serving on my fourth term. I really enjoy serving as Commissioner and look forward to all the projects that are coming up here in the near future. I would like to also thank, congratulate you, Mayor, and Commissioner Escobedo at this time for winning this race. I would also like to extend a warm thank you and appreciation to Commissioner Jones, who served the last eight years. You know, there's a lot of projects that he had a hand on helping to build. And with that, you know, I, you know, again, thank, thank you to all and I look forward to working with all of you for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Ramirez. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you once again, Commissioner, and congratulations, Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you, guys.
With that, we'll have Commissioner-elect Escobedo. After the oath.
Will you join us, sir? I state your full name.
I, Alberto Escobedo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm. Or affirm. That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Commissioner place four.
Of Commissioner place four.
Of the city of Rio Grande City.
Of the city of Rio Grande City.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
And the United States.
And the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
Foremost, I would like to thank my wife and my children, my family and of course, all the voters that went out and all the support. And you know, to be given this opportunity is phenomenal, to be able to serve the community in this capacity. And I would like to thank every voter and of course, God for giving me that opportunity to work with you guys. And I, I'm excited to work with you all and learn what we have to do every single day. And we're here to work for our community and excited. And of course, want to thank my mom and my dad that they seen me from heaven. Thank you, Dad. Thank you all. De todo corazón.
Congratulations, Commissioner Escobedo. Congratulations, Commissioner Ramirez. And as you were mentioning, Commissioner Jones as well for the years of service. Thank you. And once again, welcome on board, Commissioner Escobedo. Certainly look forward to working with you and continue to move our city forward with the many projects that we have. But with that, I'll go ahead and, because I need to get sworn in before I continue with the conversation.
Raise your right hand. In the name and by the authority of Texas, the state of Texas, I'm now administering the oath of office. I.
I.
State your name.
Huel Villarreal.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties and offices.
The duties and offices.
Of mayor.
Of mayor.
In and for.
In and for.
The great city, Rio Grande City.
The great city of Rio Grande City.
Star County, Texas.
Star County, Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the law of the United States.
And the law of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Well, I just wanna continue with that. Obviously, we have so many people to thank. Of course, my family, without my family, without our families, we're not able to do what we do and spend the time and effort that we do. And that goes for all of us Commissioners, the hours that we spend. And of course, our families are there supporting us and allowing us that opportunity to spend so much time in moving our city in the direction that we want to go. So to all our families, thank you for allowing us that opportunity and and that, those efforts that we have to continue to do as a community, as a family. Thank you to all the staff as well at the city for what you did with this election. The, as I was reiterating earlier, the electorate for being out there and for exercising their right to vote. And cannot say enough about letting the voice be heard. Thank you to Commissioner Jones again for his effort and time. Congratulations again to Commissioner Ramirez and Commissioner Escobedo. Congratulations. It was a hard fought election. But as I was stating earlier, once the election is over, then it's a peaceful transition of power and now moving forward with our, with our plans that we have. And that is something that votes well for our community that we're able to do that. Granted, I'll be the first one to admit that as a commission, we are gonna disagree. And that's okay to disagree. It's okay to express our opinions. And sometimes we will be in the minority, sometimes we'll be in the majority, but that's our democracy. And of course, respecting of our democracy. And we have, by and large, in our community, I cannot say enough about how our community was able to to express, in spite of a global pandemic, in spite of COVID-19, we were still able to get the vote out and have a record turnout. And that speaks volumes for our community. And of course, speaking of COVID, I urge the public to continue exercising all the protocols. I'll check all the protocols. Because of course, the uptake in cases are there and of course, this is not the time to do it. But nonetheless, it's time to continue expressing and every time that we can get to express the need for our community to follow certain protocols to address this global pandemic that appears to be affecting our community even more and the cases are increasing. So I urge the public to keep that in mind. So with that, we have many projects. When you're looking at our city and all the projects that we have in place coming up in the next several years, Rio Grande City will continue to be transformed and you're already seeing it. So let's continue moving all these projects forward. You're talking about over $25 million over the next two years, just within our city. Of course, that's not counting the $60 million project within that Rio Grande Village and many others. So I, it's a great time to be living here in Rio Grande City because we do believe that it's a great place to live, to work and to forge our American dream here in our beautiful city. And definitely, we are gonna continue to work forward for that. So with that, again, congratulations to our Commissioners for being there and continuing to serve our community and look forward to the next four years. And the many, many more projects that we're gonna continue to fulfill here in our beautiful city. So with that, thank you so much for your efforts. And I look forward to the continued work that we still have, much, much more to build this legacy here in our beautiful city. So again, thank you so much. Any closing comments by anyone at this time before we adjourn for the night?
Just like to state again, Mayor, congratulations to Mr. Ramirez, to Mr. Alberto Escobedo and yourself. You know, you all have set all kinds of records. Number one, I mean, the turnout was tremendous. And secondly, I believe that, and I hope that it's the last time, that we need to have a virtual swearing in. I hope we never have to go to this again.
Hey, did you notice it's a virtual swearing in? We're making record here too, sir.
It's amazing, Mayor, but again, congratulations to everybody. And we need to continue working hard and pushing this city forward. There's a lot of good things coming up and there's a lot of projects at hand that that we need to work on. And again, I welcome Mr. Escobedo to the council and I'm ready to work with him and I'm glad and happy to be part of this commission. So again, congratulations to everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner Garza and for, it's absolutely true. We would rather be, of course, at our commission chambers for this. However, with this COVID and pandemic, we've had to adapt and adjust and find a way to make things happen. And thank you all for, again, going back to this virtual, absolutely. And that just votes going back to our community and having to as critical as, as impersonal to us in reference to us swearing in. So thank you for that. But very well stated, Commissioner Garza, for bringing that up. Commissioner Flores, anything else?
Yes, Mayor, again, congratulations to the review and I would like to extend a special thank you to the spouses and the families that, you know, go through these elections as well. I don't think that anybody knows better than you, your spouses and your family, how hard and difficult it is. It was especially difficult because it was a long tradition. So thank you all for being very supportive. You support your spouses, you also support the city commission and we thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Flores. And with that, if there's anything else, we can convene for the day or be done for the day as you adjourn for the day. I had lost for words at this time. But anything else, Commissioner Ramirez, Commissioner Escobedo, before we conclude for the evening?
No, Mayor, just again, thank you all and again, we continue to rely on each other. Again, this is a very unified commission and we look forward to working with Commissioner Escobedo. And again, and look forward to all the projects that are coming up. Like you mentioned, there's over $70 million of projects coming in the next couple of years. So again, looking forward to this growth and again, looking forward to working with you guys. again looking forward to this growth and again looking forward to working with you guys so thank you all
thank you and you have the final words Mr Commissioners Escobedo so you have the floor sir
thank you very much guys you know thank you for all the hard work and we're gonna continue working for our community thank you for the warm welcome and we're ready and I'm ready to learn thank you all and God bless
thank you so with that at this time if no one objects this meeting is adjourned no objection meeting is adjourned again thank you so much appreciate it thank you good night